16th May, 2023 at 10:00 a.m. We've all received the copy of the previous meeting's minutes. It's the pleasure of the commission.
The motion we approve.
One second. Motion to approve the minutes in seconds. Not opposed, motion passes. Moving down to appointments and hearings. First on the agenda is Taylor County EMS. EMS coverage proposal. Whoever wants to represent the EMS, there are several here.
So we had a meeting about a few, it's probably been about a month ago, with Orville and members from Taylor County EMS and Flemington EMS talking about coverage in the Flemington area. We've had a second meeting talking about proposals for providing that coverage. And this is to go over those proposals. You'll see there's a copy from us, and I think Kelly also has something as well. And I can let her talk about that.
First and foremost, I was never informed that there was a problem at Flemington. I know that we do utilize mutual aid frequently, and we do that through Bridgeport and Moore and Taylor County as well. So my concern was that your, everyone's idea of mutual aid is not maybe the same as mine. We provide 24-hour coverage in our agency through volunteers and through mutual aid. And if you go to the states, the legislative rule 64, you can read about mutual aid. And if you want me to read that to you, I will, if you'd like me to read that. Availability. EMS agencies shall ensure that service for which they are licensed is available to the public or population, served within their regular operating area on a 24-hour continuous basis, either by providing themselves or by written agreement with another licensed EMS agency. I have four mutual aid agreements. I have the one from Barber County, I have from Taylor County that Gavin signed, and I have Bridgeport, and I have Ann Moore. So anything beyond that is covered through the 911 Center mutual aid agreements through that. The EMS agency maintains current written mutual agreements with addressing all aspects of a reciprocal service provision with all adjacent EMS agencies or operates under mutual aid guidelines established by the local system. That's coming from the state office. So from the state office and my licensure, which we have a superior rating, we are covered 24/7, 365 days a year, either by volunteers or by mutual aid agreements. So to say that there is no coverage at times in Flemington is not a fair statement to us. I have 15 people on the roster now. I just added another medic and another EMT volunteer, and they've covered their weight in the last three weeks that they've been on the truck. I know that Taylor County comes out sometimes. I have here two times in the last month or so, in April it was actually, two times they came up to our area and covered our calls. Okay, got it. That was probably because Bridgeport couldn't come, or, you know, they were closer to the patient, because in my mind, I want the closest agency getting to the sick and injured first. So here's just an example where we go to Barber County. There's what Barber County called it. We did. These actually, in all the clips, are the amount of times we were called to Grafton within 75 days. Of those, these we did not respond. Someone else did. Bridgeport, Ann Moore, another four. This amount, we were responding and returned, whether they got a crew in station or whether one freed up the hospital. That's usually what happens. Of this, well, I'm gonna give you this one first. This one, we responded, transported, and/or signed off the patient. So we made patient contact with these. This one, we came into Grafton two times, once with a full crew, and Taylor County only had a half crew, so we provided the driver and followed them to the hospital. So we came in with a full crew, we transported, I went undermanned to the hospital, my EMT went with and drove Taylor County's ambulance. Same with one incident, Taylor County only had three people on staff, so the lieutenant mayor there, we got together, her and I, and I brought 308 in and left my other crew member in Flemington in case something would happen. And I came back and drove the ambulance, and we transported that patient. It happened to be a D O S, and we handled it well. So I don't know where the problem was. I just know that I'm covering my calls, whether they are with my volunteers or with mutual aid, as it should be. If you want the breakdown, I have the breakdown here of how many times? 30 times we were alerted for a Taylor County EMS call. Of those, like 13, we transported and made patient contact, whatever that would be. Or, you know, and probably five or six of those were returned. So I'm not sure we need any assistance from Taylor County EMS. That's my stand on things. So I'm not sure you need to go any farther with proposals. I don't know what you want to do. I'm just telling you, I'm covering my calls. And there's sometimes, which I don't mind, that's what we're there for. So, and, but I also would have liked to have been alerted to this problem before I was called into a meeting and told that y'all were gonna shut my agency down if we didn't provide 24-hour coverage.
I don't think anybody said it.
Well, that's what they told me in the meeting.
That was.
That is what was told in the meeting to me.
We had an original meeting, and you were invited.
I know, and I was out of town, and I apologize.
I think Jason McDaniel represented that, as well as the ambulance authority. And we discussed, and I'd say meeting I attended, and we discussed that we wanted to come to some sort of an agreement within the county. Because I know, I don't know if these gentlemen have, but I've been getting complaints that we're giving levying money and other agencies are running it rather than the county's running it.
Well, they also are coming into here, too. I mean, I don't want you to think they're just coming to Flemington.
But they said, and what we were concerned about, or what I was concerned about with these complaints, is while we are giving levying money, and then we have to have all the mutual aid and people not working within the county to cover the county, as it should be.
Well, it's obvious that we're trying.
That was my basic concern.
It's obvious.
And that's why we shared, I shared this with the commission, and that's when we called with the ambulance authority, and I guess the ambulance authority hadn't been meeting, they can't even get a quorum, but then they've had, I know they didn't even have my email correct. So I didn't even, last time I was at a meeting, I believe, was three years ago at Flemington. But the concern's been expressed that levying money is being used, but out of state agencies or out of county agencies are covering, meaning.
Well, that's a problem for both agencies, then. It's not just a problem for myself.
Which we.
I'm not gonna argue.
I know, I'm just saying, it's, you know, it's good for the goose.
We, we do a tenfold amount more calls than Flemington, because we do provide a larger service area over the county, and we do have multiple calls throughout the day. And we do have two crews that are staffed 24/7, 365 days a year. Now, if there's a call-off, that is something completely different, that is not in our control. We'll do every, we'll do, we'll try our best to get someone to come in and cover that call-off, but we can't control if someone gets sick, one of our employees. But we, it doesn't matter, any EMS agency you look at across the entire state or nation, you're always gonna have to end up turning over some type of calls, of which we keep, have kept it to a minimum, which has been about four or five calls a month, that where we have already had two, three, and/or four ambulances already out on calls, that we've had to turn over these calls to Flemington or another agency. So we are doing our best at covering all of our calls with having anywhere from 150 to 200 calls a month. So again, we do our best to cover everything that we can feasibly do with the amount of staffing that we have. And having two 24-hour trucks, granted, again, if there's a call-off, that's something different, but we get everything covered the best as we can. Now, if you look at this from a couple years ago, it was a completely different situation where there were multiple calls being turned over, not only by us, but other agencies as well, that weren't just getting covered initially. But the amount of calls that we've been turning over to Flemington have been to a minimum. Again, I have all of our records, too, that show when Flemington have came and handled a call for us. Now, there are times where we have alerted Flemington and/or another EMS agency to come and handle a call, but if we have a crew that frees up, that other ambulance gets canceled, and we end up handling that entirely. But again, the proposal from us, from Taylor County EMS, is there in front of you guys, and not saying that's the end-all answer to everything, but it was just some things that we had talked about in a second meeting. So the first meeting was with Orville and members from Taylor County EMS, the ambulance authority, the OEM, Flemington as well. And it was decided to have a second meeting after that to talk about proposals. And what you have typed up in front of you were some of those proposals that we had talked about in said meeting that Kelly was privy to and there as well. So none of this is any new news, at least for us, wise down here. And this is just presented to you guys. You can review it if you'd like to do something with that, by all means. If not, that's completely understandable as well. But we just wanted to make sure we provided you with information for this meeting.
How many crews do you have a day?
Depends upon the day.
For instance, let's say right now.
Yeah.
Right now, how many, how many crews, your ambulances, you have on the road right now?
Two.
About in the evening shift?
Two.
About midnight shift?
Two.
And those are all staffed?
Yes.
24 hours of that?
Yes. We run 7A to 7P, 7P to 7A. We do 12-hour, 24-hour shifts. Those are the same for every single day of the week. Now, if you look towards the end of the week, there's during the day shift, 7A to 7P, there are three crews, and then on night shift, there's only two crews. So there are days of the week we do have additional crews on. Now, when it comes to next week with the Spirit of Grafton Festival and Memorial Day Parade, we have four crews on, because that is our busiest time of year. So, I mean, we do put on additional staffing for whenever we know we're gonna have additional runs, or if a, the hospital or one of the local nursing homes calls us ahead of time to set up a transportation for one of their patients to go to a doctor's appointment or needs to go for surgery or something like that, we make sure we have additional crews to still cover the 911 calls in the county. But we can't control if three or four or five people call 911 at once, because there's only either two or three ambulances. You can't split an ambulance and have to cover all of that. So then that's when mutual aid comes into place, of which we, from the last meeting, Michelle had already told you guys, we have it up to 10 agencies deep for if a 911 call goes out and we can't cover it, then it goes to 10 different agencies, being the closest, and then all the way up to the furthest away, so.
I mean, there's usually a third.
What, where we have to use mutual aid? I believe last month was five.
I mean.
I may have to dispute that, because I have the records right here, where in the last 75 days, from March the 5th, I believe, there were, that's, we'll learn 75 days, there were 30 times we were alerted to Grafton, and I have those here.
You may have been alerted for those calls, but you didn't.
Well, I have the breakdown.
Okay.
If you'd like to see that.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean.
And I can go with our records, too, which should be the exact same, but in the past month, we've only turned over five calls, so. And not all of those, you guys ended up responding.
Okay, so of the 30 calls, we were, 13 times, we did not respond. Either we didn't have a crew, or we were out on something, or whatever. They got mutual aid from Bridgeport and Ann Moore. Five times, we were alerted, responded, and returned. 10 times, we were alerted, responded, transported, or obtained a refusal. So 10 times, we made patient contact here. And then two times, I told you about the two times that I provided, one time, well, one time I provided a crew member, and one time I provided the ambulance with their crew member and myself. So that equals 30 times, and I have all those C A Ds.
And that's in the past 75 days.
Yes.
I was just meaning the past month.
Well, okay, the past month, we can look it up if you'd like.
I mean, that's okay.
Not that they got their file.
I'm just saying, and a couple of those calls that you're also referencing, we already had an ambulance on scene that needed additional ambulances to cover that call, because there was multiple patients.
One was the car, last week, yes.
Yes, so.
One of those. Most of the time, we are going into Grafton if they're out on transport. So a lot of times, it's not. A lot of times, it's the emergencies. But a lot of times, it's they're out on transports, and we're having to go in while they're on the transport.
To also attest to that, if the hospital has an emergent transport that has to go out of the hospital to another higher-facilitated hospital, those have to be taken out immediately, because they could be going to the ICU, the NICU, the PICU, they could be going to surgery, they could be going in for a cath. So those, we have no control of when the hospital calls, that patient has to go as well. But again, we have on two 24-hour crews, bearing, there's no call-off, so there's always another ambulance, at least, if they do have to go ahead and go and take one of those calls from the hospital, so. And again, if we do have transport scheduled, we bring in additional crew to help cover that, so that would be three ambulances or four crews to cover our calls. But again, if we have three, four, five, six people that call 911, in the same time, we can't control that, and we only have so many ambulances and so many crews to be able to cover that, so.
And we don't have a problem coming in for that.
Depending upon where it is in the county. Correct?
Well, possibly.
Okay.
It makes no sense to run Flemington all the way on the 119 north, when you could have Mon County come down and be there twice as quick.
Those times, you guys have been alerted for that. Preston County has been alerted twice, along with Mon County and Marion County, and they all were not able to respond, and you guys were the fifth ones alerted, first that call. So, I mean, we also alert the closest next ambulance, bearing where it is in the county.
In hearing all of this, what is the problem? Did someone say something that wasn't true?
He's talking about that call right there, and I can explain that. It was a call to Oak Grove. Takes us about 45 minutes to get there from Flemington to Oak Grove. I am not sure about him alerting someone else first, but I, at the time, had an overdose call to a residence in Flemington. We responded, they returned us, because they said they didn't need us anymore, so we returned. I'm very familiar with that residence. I've been there many times, I know what goes on there. I was anticipating having to go back there. It's, you know, I shouldn't have done that, but I anticipated having to go back there. Plus, it was totally volunteer crew that day. The other person, because I was one of them, the other person had something to do, but said, you know, "If we get called back here, I'll be right back, and I'll cancel whatever it is I'm doing." I said, "Okay." So we were alerted for that call he's talking about, and I scratched, because I wanted the next one to get there quicker than, I mean, I was gonna get there anyways. So that's the call, that's what started this whole entire thing.
I mean, I, I have those records from the 911 Center, that shows Preston, Mon, and Marion were all alerted first. And altogether, after we were finally able to get a crew together with no other agencies being able to respond, it was over an hour before we could get an ambulance to them. And again, you guys did respond on an overdose call, and then were canceled, and you guys were there in station, but we didn't alert you first. We went through our mutual aid, of which was Preston, then Mon, and then Marion. You guys were the next closest, and it does not take 45 minutes to get to that residence as well.
Well, that's for me to do.
We have a big discussion at our last meeting about coverage, didn't we?
Yes.
When it was the last meeting. And if I understand this correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, let's say that you get a call, you have a certain amount of time, maybe what is it, three minutes to respond?
Three minutes, and then they second alert, or they, they status check it, and then they second alert after a few more minutes.
And then if, let's say that you get a call, and you get three minutes, and if you can't answer the call within three minutes, then they tone.
Well, they give you another five minutes, I believe it is, and then.
So there's a total of eight minutes before they recall someone else?
It's six to eight minutes, usually, before they second alert.
But in that timeframe, someone, all of our EMTs and medics have radios, so they will get on there or call in and say momentarily. So they're coming to the station. So all of our calls are, we're on scene within the time of alerting, and the time of getting on scene to that patient is 15 minutes, which isn't bad. Sometimes maybe a few minutes longer over on Route 50, where, you know, we have to travel very long and get to Route 50, might be a little longer. We come into Grafton, it's gonna be a little longer, just from the, the amount of distance traveled, so. But within 15 minutes, we're reaching our patient, which is, that's okay with the state, so I'm not.
I think what we probably, could we, you wanna, are those our copies, or are those yours?
Well, they're mine, but I can make a copies, or?
I thought maybe we could review this, and you guys haven't had time to do this, and you were those. And possibly what we need to do, too, is set up an authority meeting where we can hash them, if it's got found, and then come back.
Well, I, I would prefer to be meeting with you all, instead of just Taylor and us.
Well, maybe we could just have the authority meeting here, and we could call a spatial meeting.
That's fine.
And just discuss EMS services.
Yeah, I mean, all parties involved need to be here, and the discussion needs to be had, and the conclusion needs to be come to. I mean, I don't, I'm not involved with the EMS.
Just as long as, you know, the complaints that I've been receiving, and I think that we've heard here, too.
We have.
Is we need 24-hour coverage, 365, seven days a week.
And we have that. I mean, that's, I understand your levy, I understand that.
I think what we probably need to do is.
But I think those people complaining may not understand that whole EMS aspect of things.
Call a spatial meeting, just with the authority. Of course, we'd be open to the public, but it would just be to discuss these problems
No way all problems can be brought to the table, discussed, and then found a solution. I mean, whatever's best for the people, obviously, is what our concern is. I mean, we want to get as quick as response down to, you know, everybody in the county that we can, and obviously, it's gonna take the help of both authorities to, to make it happen. I mean, I understand that you guys have limited staff as well, but what, what can, you know, what needs to happen to improve your staffing situation, and, you know, other things like that, that obviously, there's concerns with people in the county, so. Whenever, whenever you want to set that up, we'll, we can.
Yeah, I'll get with Kelly and Gavin and everyone that I need to to get that to be discussed.
And then we do a bylaw change on that authority.
Yep.
So whoever's involved with the authority would like to have all of those people here as well.
Okay.
It'd morning or evening better for you guys.
We'll make it work where it's dated.
So everyone says it doesn't matter, so I'm here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll just come late 28th and 29th.
Okay.
That way, we can get everybody to go and put all the cards out on the table, come to some sort of an agreement, right?
I mean, I'm not sure what, what the answer is. I just know that, like, I just want people to understand that when I call in Bridgeport, it's because they're 10 minutes away. If I call in Taylor, they're, they're more than 10 minutes away, depending on where the call is, but.
And do you call them, or does 911?
Well, the, the.
911.
911.
911, that's correct.
If I say alert next to, they're going by my, by my run assignments.
Okay.
At the 911 Center. So if it's closer to Grafton, then Taylor's gonna be alerted, but if it's closer to Barber County, I know that didn't happen the last time, and that wasn't my breakdown, I don't know where that was, but they went to Barber Corner Road, which technically should have been Barber County coming in, and that was the two calls that they took for us.
I know in the last meeting that we had, we were discussing this, and I made a comment, and I want to make sure that what I said was accurate, okay? A few months, weeks ago, you guys were here and were trying to get a driver or EMS services, as well as fire, together, and you were going to contract that, you were trying to contract that with the city of Bridgeport. But yet, if I understand correctly, you made that request, but it was denied by the city council of Bridgeport, is that correct?
Yeah, the, the city manager and the fire chief actually came to me with that proposal, and we worked everything out. The city manager thought everything was good, and when it got to the politics of it, there was a couple councilmen that had an issue with it, and it's my understanding that they're hiring a consultant right now to look at it and see where they go. But we, we had all the details worked out. Brian took it to the city council, and there were a couple councilmen that objected to it, so.
Yeah.
They tabled the whole.
I'm sure that was the case, and that's what I said, but I wanted to make sure that that was accurate.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, because I knew you had been trying to get that, where you would have staff out there.
Yeah, we would have had a full crew Monday through Friday, day shift, provided to the city of Bridgeport, and we would reimburse them their direct cost for that labor, and they've tabled it right now. They've, they've got a consultant, I'm not sure if they've got him on board yet or not, but Brian said he's gonna, he's actually looking at the whole city of Bridgeport, because there, city of Bridgeport's providing service to Harrison County, city of Shinston.
I know, they're in the same boat to a lot of counties, aren't they? Maybe we can set that up, and we can talk all these things through, and come up to some sort of resolution.
I think that would be best.
May 28th, did you remember?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get a meeting scheduled and get all parties involved together, and we'll get this thing hashed out, and we'll make something work. Appreciate you guys coming. We will, we will meet again soon.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you all.
Is anybody here from Hickory Hills? Anybody here from Hickory Hills? Well? We'll skip it if they come at 10:45 or at their appointment time, so we'll go back to them.
Okay.
Taylor County Senior Center, fund requests.
She is not here.
She's not here yet?
And Sheena's ready.
We'll, we'll skip to Sheena.
All right, thank you. We have a couple items that seem to work here. Excuse me. Let's see, that's Taylor County, so this is the Great Town Project. So we do have a small drawdown for the Great Town Project, it's just admin. So Shelby's been working on the project, and so she's got CBG working on the snow project, working on the environmental that we saw. I haven't gotten an answer from the state yet, and I guess a lot of changes, stuff in the state, and we're just kind of slow getting responses. So she's done a bit of administrative work for 133507, and working with, I think, the pressure for the ARBA side of funds. So she's applied $179.11 to the ARBA funds, so a total of 15, 14, 18 for requisition number
Requisitions are filed for a total of 15, 14, 18.
I assume you're.
Second.
Motion to make, second, to approve 15, 14, 18 for the Great Town Sewer Project. Not opposed, motion passes. And on Tuesday, we'll send it out.
So is that breakdown, I've dropped information before.
With our pass.
Oh, okay, I didn't catch that, that was what you were saying. So generally, the $179.11 will come from county funds, so they'll have to get a check issue for that, and then the CBG will only do this one here, when the funds get into the account, that you all have to know, and we will.
And Jaren, that, that $179, I'll handle, because that's the ARBA.
Yeah, the other funds.
Okay. I'm sorry. Multiple funding sources, it gets tricky.
We keep getting a little closer to that project, though.
Ever so slightly. We've just, we've been.
Ever so slightly. We've just, we've been waiting on the, the state for that environmental review, of course, and I don't think that we've heard anything yet. Last time I talked to Shelby, we hadn't. And I know that they've lost some people and kind of filled gaps, so it's been a little bit of a struggle to get that finished up. And that's been three months, two months, three months?
Two, three months, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, is that all for Great Town?
Yes. Patricia, one of these, thank you. Next, Health Department, I don't have a drawdown, but just to give you a little bit of an update, the, from what, the last meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, they had finished up their live auction. I'm not sure when the people were supposed to cut this up. They were gonna get with the city of Grafton about scheduling the dilution, but they weren't gonna be able to do anything after June post. So it's just kind of a little bit of waiting right now until the city's able to get that scheduled.
Yeah, I have heard mid-June.
Yeah. Then they'll proceed with getting the building tore down, getting the parking lot graded, paved, whatever the plans are for those. And hopefully, August, maybe we'll be able to wrap up and close out the project. Broadband, we don't really have anything on that. I don't know, Patricia, is, has City now provided any type?
Nothing, I don't know.
Nothing yet, okay. I know that Shelby's been in contact with them for the, the agreement, the pole attachment agreement. So where that stands, you know, what's holding up is on that, naturally, where, where the engineers or the consultants still working on the committee and stuff, but we're just, it's a slow process. You know, we're just at a standstill until they get the pole agreement so we can move forward. They are, actually today, Region Six staff is going out to take a, a view of the area, start working on the environmental to get ready for getting that processed done. It, it does require a little bit of time, going out and taking pictures, so Region Six staff has been working with Thompson and Litten on trying to get that taken care of and get this project moving forward. It's just a slow, slow process, the environmental with.
Aren't they all?
Oh, my goodness, yes, absolutely. And then the last item I have is Taylor County, or excuse me, the Taylor County PSD. We are, let me try and get the right line here. We are asking for final paperwork or final payment for the contractor. For ten thousand, eight hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. This is all requisition number two. And this will zero out the contract.
So that situation been resolved?
Yeah, still up in the air with the ownership. They really can't move forward, you know, from what Michelle's saying, that, that lack of response from the Army Corps, lack of response from the city of Grafton, trying to get something figured out. So I'm not sure if their next steps are trying to maybe get an attorney on board to look at it and try to figure out the ownership of it.
It's a property dispute and, and they have to get to, they have to cross over into the corps' property.
Which we assume is the corps' property.
Which we assume is the corps' property. So that seems to be the holdup.
Yes.
Patricia, that was ARP on that one for, for the draw water project? Was the money ARP money that we gave to PSD?
If nothing got done, why do we have to pay money?
No, 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 this is the finish up reward that was done up there to fix that emergency line. Remember the, the line that the county would have funded? And ultimately, we couldn't really do a whole lot because the line was cracked and went on under that concrete pad. And so it really didn't, I mean, it didn't really solve the problem, but, because you couldn't go on.
This is what had a contract to bid on?
Yes. That's the last drawdown for the contractor.
But he didn't do anything.
Yeah, they did all the work that was bid out.
Oh.
It didn't, it didn't solve the problem once they got in there to find out that that line underneath the concrete pad still had a crack in the bottom of it that allowed water to leak, and they couldn't tie the line that they were putting in to that line that's existing under the dam. So now it's just where that line is leaking, it's a property dispute. We don't know if the city owns it, whether the Army Corps owns it, and neither one. Oh, no, that's okay. Yeah, no, no, I don't.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
But no, it's...
It's not.
We were hoping that would, we were told that it would fix the problem and we would have water, but it is not the case because after they dug into it, more trouble.
Yeah. It was further back on that line underneath the concrete pad that goes back towards the foot of the dam. The line actually was cracked further back. So it wasn't just in the portion, it was only Taylor County PSD or Grafton's property.
Wonder if it is a solved, but pumping water on the...
That's what they've been doing.
That's what they're still doing, pumping water.
Why don't that work from now on?
Well, because they're gonna have to run the pumps twenty-four seven, where if they get it from the dam like they had been for a hundred years, then it's all gravity fed and there's no additional connect, 'cause it's just...
Until it's clean.
Well, it's just clean, they're coming out of the dam where they're pumping from the bottom of the river, it's bringing up all that sediment and silt and everything, it takes more filter.
The silt and sediment comes from the bottom of the lake, out of the gates, so if you pump it from, if it's just draining from the other side of the dam, it less, I give you your, your cleanest water in the country, can you?
It really is ideal to take it from the dam versus the river for the very reason that's clean. It's just most people don't have a dam to be afforded that opportunity. It's working, which is not the ideal.
It's a solid problem.
Well, that's the issue right now, which is trying to find who owns the property where that line goes in under the dam that needs to be replaced, repaired, must be replaced. Because the Taylor County PSD was able to get a permit to go up to within five feet of their boundary on, on their side of the property, they're claiming their side of the property, which they couldn't, because that crack is actually outside that five-foot permit, they couldn't go any further into what they consider the dam property to actually repair or do any more work. So.
It's a mess.
It's a mess, yeah.
Well, would we like to pay the ten eight eighty-one fifty-eight on requisition?
Yeah, it's a move.
Second.
Requisition.
Better pay it, but we can't.
Second, we pay now.
Approve ten eight eighty-one fifty-eight.
And we owe that to the contractor?
Yes. Now it'll be one that the county will have to pay.
Right, that's not ARPA fund.
Yeah. I'm gonna go ahead and give you, the unsigned line is straight to Taylor County PSD, we just combined them.
Thank you.
We'll just take care of the contractor now.
Yes, that, that will be right at the contractor.
Anything else that could be done, we'll start all over again and...
Yes. It, yeah, we, we, okay, thank you. We did get a notification from the Army Corps that there's something available to do, potentially to do a project. It is a twenty-five, seventy-five, twenty-five split match, but it still goes back to the ownership, because that money would be coming through the Army Corps, which is gonna require whoever's gonna be doing the work to own the property. And that's still in the dispute.
We're gonna solve that.
Well, ultimately, I figure someone's gonna have to get an attorney and start figuring out something, something moving up, you know. And I figured, I, I, I would have to be an Army Corps or the PSD or the town or the city, I just don't know who's gonna take the lead on that. I just don't know.
Getting anything from Army Corps, very difficult, very difficult.
I mean, we got notification that they'd be willing to help out, but it means nothing any good to even start putting an application out of the ownership. That's gonna have to be the first step in getting it resolved.
Might have to inform the Public Service Commission of West Virginia. They have some authority in that to say if this is an emergency, you know, they might, they might be able to move, PSD, the Public Service Commission of West Virginia, might be able to move that project, come to a decision on who owns that line, or they may, might force Army Corps' hand to get, get more involved with this to get a resolution.
Yeah, but I'm not sure, you know, what PSD has actually done. I missed the meeting last week, so I'm gonna go next month.
When Michelle was in here a while back, she spoke about the emergency situation, but it was turned down because everybody usually pumps from a river anyway, so they didn't, it didn't qualify for an emergency, if I remember her telling us that, because if everybody else pumps out of a river or out of a place, that's what we're having to do. So never qualified under that emergency, but it was, I don't see how it, I don't know.
I don't know. It might have been emergency, they probably went for IJDC, critical needs. And the critical need, that, that's been a real hot situation lately. Everyone's been requesting critical need money, and they, IJDC reviews all this, and this isn't necessarily an emergency, this isn't necess, so they might have just been hit too hard, and it might have been the way the application was worded or put in, I'm not sure, but it kinda sounds like it, it's critical need to me. Because if you're running those temporary pumps permanently, you're gonna spend so much in electricity costs and you can just feed from the head, the gravity of the dam.
Right, but I think, you know, of course, I can't speak for IJDC, but at the same time, when the PSD potentially has the ability to do it a different manner, like pumping, maybe can do regular pumps and, you know, I think they look at everything as a whole. You know, like you just said, it's unusual that you have a dam where you wouldn't get fresh water out of it. Most of them do pump out of a river. So I'm, I'm sure they understand the plight, but they also look at and say, well, you've got money that maybe you could maybe do the pumps or put in a different type of a pumping system, you know, that type of thing, so.
Is there any way we can maybe speed the process up for the PSD to, or the Corps, or is there anything we can do to expedite this?
It might mean to...
Two years.
And I'm sure the, the PSD's engineer would be one of the spearhead that streamlined that, reach out to the attorneys, reach out to Public Service Commission, IJDC, and it, yeah.
Well, they've been trying, I mean, it's just, I think a lot of it too is because of, I think the city of Grafton also just owns it, I believe, that owns the land or the, the lane that sits, the plant sits on. And just from my understanding, we're just talking with Michelle, there's just, you know, lack of coordination, lack of, or not coordination, communication, trying to get, you know, meetings set up, getting people to call back, same thing with the Army Corps. It's just trying to get, probably just need, that's what Michelle was saying, they probably just need to get an attorney somewhere that's one to sit down and try to coordinate all this and get, get some type of resolution, get it moving.
Maybe we can get them in here, the PSD in here next meeting and see where they're at on it, maybe we can shove that forward, 'cause it's, it's been too long.
Yeah, and I'll ask her if she can, in the meantime, reach out to the PSD and see what they're telling.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And she may have done that.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And we'll get her in here for an update.
Okay.
And I, I know that they, they sent communications to Senator Manchin, Senator Capito, but I don't know that they've had much of a response from them. I don't think that's why I got the notification I did, say, hey, these funds are available.
The gentleman from Union's office that comes into our meetings, maybe we can get him involved, so.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've not met him, I don't.
He's been here a couple meetings. He's always reaching out to us.
Well, yeah.
Is it Doosan Berry or something like that?
Yes, Rex.
Here's his card.
I, well, yeah, I'm just taking it for sure, I think I have.
We probably don't have enough to get things moving this week.
Well, somebody has to.
I think.
Squeaky wheel gets the grease.
I think the Army Corps up here is willing to work with this. It's in home office in Pittsburgh that's giving us a difficult.
Well, I don't know if it's so much in Pittsburgh or whether it's actually in DC, I just don't know. I think people up here is trying to do what they can, it's just to hire us, and I'm thinking it, it's not, not just Pittsburgh, but it also could be DC though, too. But I know they're working on it, we're trying to do what we can when they let us know what they need, but.
There has to be some type of new technology to repair a line without having to tear a dam.
You would think, I mean, honestly, like, chuck another pipe in through there. I mean.
Rubbing things through a good pipe and it, it lines it up.
Oh, yeah.
Cast and place pipe.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, I think, I'm not an engineer much.
Water is where it's given.
Yeah, but there's also, I think, two ninety-three turns in that water line.
That sounds, that sounds like a very complicated.
So that would make it a little bit more difficult than that straight pipe where you could shoot a liner.
That engineer could figure this out.
So, but unfortunately, I mean, we'll, we'll still plug it along, I just, I just missed a meeting this last week, I didn't put it on my calendar and forgot to go.
I'm, I'm not sure what we can do to push it along, but.
I wonder if we've been going.
It's been a year.
That's what I was thinking.
I think it was May of last year.
It's been a long year.
Yeah, I think it was May of last year when it actually.
Feels like forever.
Yeah.
So the, the project started and then they found an issue during construction?
Well, it, it broke, it was an emergency situation, started pumping out of the river, tried to figure out a way to fund it, and that's when we decided to try to do critical needs, which didn't work out. Yeah. Now they're trying to figure out, because it's come to light, the Army Corps saying they don't own it, and city of Grafton can't find any evidence that's in their name, so just moving on.
And what they thought was one leak is multiple leaks, because they repaired the first big blast, and then after that, they realized that there's more deeper.
Yeah, so they went into the line that they put in, they end up having to redirect it and put a cap on it, but they couldn't tie it into the existing line, because the existing line has a crack on the bottom of the pipe, they don't know how far back the crack is.
Yeah, and it depends where those cracks are, 'cause you cap it off and drain the water out, camera, then you might also lose a ten thousand dollar camera in the line trying to figure out where the...
But where the crack is, is on, is in a line that they didn't have permission to be able to go in and go, because it's under the concrete pad at the base of the dam.
My goodness.
Yeah, so it's very complicated, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sheena, does that mean that we're closing this out?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm gonna give you a copy of that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's a, that's a final thing for, for that project. Okay, we'll move back up.
Both of our Hickory Hills and Senior Center.
Hickory Hills representative is first on the list, so, sir, you're on us?
Well, thank you. Do you want me to step up there?
You can approach if you'd like.
Okay. My name's Jeff D. I'm the current president of Hickory Hills. It's housing development off two fifty, Port Fairmont. We have a sewage treatment plant that we operate, and it's nearly fifty years old. So it's, it's shown its age and we're doing, you know, and restrictions from the, you know, from the government on, on the treatment finance are getting worse, and it's, it's just getting more difficult for us to take care of. So what I'm looking at, or the development wants to do is contact, well, we have contacted Whitehall and Harrison County. Well, Harrison County said they really couldn't do it this time. Whitehall said, I got a verbal commitment that if we jump through certain hoops, that they would take us on. And South Point was right above us, approximately sixteen hundred feet above us, and they said, like I said, if we get everything taken care of, that we would, they would accept our sewage, you know, so, but anyhow, what I need, first of all, would be a, a permission going, because Whitehall, of course, is American County. What I need is permission to go, you know, that you, we, we would be released to go ahead and, you know, take our sewage over to them. That's, that's the main reason I'm here this time. I guess I would need a written permission that you prove us to go ahead and do this.
Are they agreeing to pay for the line if need to be?
We would have to pay for engineering, I and I, okay, infiltration from outside sources into our system. And, you know, there's quite a bit of cost. Actually, I have one, I have two engineering companies I'm talking to at this point. One of them has come back with six hundred thousand dollars, so, you know, we're gonna have to try to get some kind of infrastructure funding if possible. And, you know, that's, of course, in the short term future, right now, I need, you know, I do need the permission to go ahead and hook, hook to Whitehall. But, yeah, you know, and of course, I would, you know, would the, I'm, I'm not sure if you would be willing to help us out with getting the infrastructure funding. I know there is infrastructure job and something in, in the state. Let's see what's...
Does, does Whitehall service South Point now?
They do, yes, they do. They're currently, yeah, they've been on it for a few years.
Okay, do they get the, like, the apartments there as well?
Correct, yes. All that whole, whole area up there is taken care of.
That's about maybe what, quarter of a mile from where do you?
It is, yeah. It's, it's not real far.
Up Wilshire Road.
It, it is, yes, sir. Yeah, they're, and what they're talking about, and which kinda surprised me, is putting a grinding pump. We have, you know, tapping in where we're at at our system, put a grinding pump, pump it up, do a two-inch line up, up to their system, which, you know, I'm kinda shocked that's only two inches, but yes.
It's small.
Yeah.
How many residents would this serve?
There are forty-two homes connected to this.
Forty-two homes, yes.
And a two-inch line would be big enough to...
That's what they say, yeah. It's shocking to me. That's what they say, yeah, it's shocking to me, I was like, oh, really? I was thinking.
Two inch force main.
It is a force main.
Yeah, force mains are sized a little bit differently than gravity lines. So, yeah, that, that line would be completely pressurized the whole time, so.
Cause it's all uphill too.
Any, any larger side, you would need a lot more residents to keep that line full, that line has to stay full, is what it is. With the gravity line, you know, it doesn't have to be, it's just gravity.
I mean, serving forty-two Taylor County residents, that seems like a good project to me. That's a lot, that's a lot of homes.
Well, I think what the issue that they're, they're gonna have is it's a private nonprofit homeowner association, which typically I don't think the state funds private entities. So unless you tie in or increase your homeowners' fees for helping with the maintenance, or maybe County Commission help with maybe tying in to, um, Whitehall, I don't know if the state would. Have you dealt with any homeowners associations? Because that was my understanding is.
I have not.
Cause we have a, we had a project over in Marion County that had two homeowners associations, and neither one of them could get funding, and their people just walked away, and the PSD forced the, the town to take them both over. And then they could put them into their project, once a, once a town took them into their system.
So, so the, that's a bottleneck, I guess, then?
Yeah, it, it's tough, yeah, I don't know of any homeowner associations that have gotten funds from, from public.
Yeah, they, they more or less said, we can't as association do it, but we can call, maybe Taylor County could help us, or even Whitehall possibly could help us.
Yeah, Whitehall, because they're a unit of local government, right? But the County Commission's not in the sewer business, so there's no really any way for them to actually, I think they do a project, but who would they turn it over to, is what I'm saying. So if you were gonna need to turn it over to somebody, you'd be better off to work with.
That's what we're going to do, we're just, that's all we're gonna do, is get this out of our hands.
Okay.
And, yeah, you know, and just, but we have to take care of the funding and all the other things that are involved with it.
We're trying to get it on there. Yeah, see if we could turn it over to Whitehall.
And not to say that the county couldn't assist Whitehall with the funding of that, partial funding of that, uh, since they are in Taylor County, if the county chose to do so, if not, it would be up to Whitehall to, uh, you know, what they wanna do on how to fund it and.
We could potentially use some of our infrastructure funds to fund the project and turn it over to Whitehall if.
Just like what you're blueprinting now.
Right. Turn it over to the city of Grafton, be the difference in that.
Exactly, yes.
And I talked to Regional Six Planning, and they said, they can't do anything without you. Well, there, it was a man that I was speaking to, he said.
Oh, I said, well, Seth is, he actually works with the Whitehall PSD on several projects, yes.
See, I think with the other entity that we were consulted about, we couldn't do anything with, per se, their, their plant.
Right.
But we were willing to help with the city to run the line, to get them city sewage.
Right.
Okay. I know we have, I believe we have been confronted with two separate homeowners associations, but with, we were willing to work with the city of Grafton to provide sewage to the one. The other was way out where we couldn't do anything with them, but I think we could probably help, I think we could probably help Hickory Hills out by, by turning it over to Whitehall Public Service District and, and using some. Especially if you're talking forty-two homes, where the other homeowner association was, I believe, twelve, twelve, thirteen homes? And the other one was about roads, was the other homeowner association, which, that's. What about, uh? Different subject. Watkins, the old Watkins farm, is that, is that considered Hickory Hills?
When you say Watkins farm.
Ron Watkins, where Ron.
Ron, what, he? It's, I think he has his own septic system where in that house, they are, as far as I know, they are not hooked up.
About Sterns, Matt Sterns? I think out that road, I think they all have septic systems.
And see, there's the Wilsons, which are outside, there are several Wilsons, uh.
Tim Rossi.
Rossi, where the, the old family house was, Rossi Junior is down, he's hooked to it, his brother's hooked on it, his, uh.
The Wilsons are hooked onto your plant?
It is, yes.
So that's more than forty-two?
And it's, well, we have thirty, thirty-some homes in our development itself.
What about Randy Wilson, is he?
Randy is hooked to it, uh, the Stickley's house is hooked to it.
And it's where Coons live?
I don't know who lives there at this point, yeah.
Okay.
At the top of the hill, there, then there's a.
Then there's two other.
There are, there are two other homes, there was, there was a modular that was put in.
Right.
That is also hooked up.
And then the mother's house was right beside that, right?
Correct. Oh, do you? Okay.
John, um, this gentleman's from Hickory Hills, and they're having problems with their sewage treatment plant. And Whitehall Public Service District, you correct me anytime I'm wrong.
Okay.
Whitehall Public Service District already handles South Point and South Point Apartments, you know where that is?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, there, Hickory Hills is about a quarter of a mile, per se, roughly, from, uh, South Point, and Whitehall Public Service District has agreed to take over their sewage treatment.
Verbally, they verbally agreed to it.
But supposedly they need a letter from the commission releasing.
Saying that since we're, they're, we're in a different county than what their service is, that, that it would be okay.
Giving you permission. Us giving them, them permission to use Marion County or Whitehall Public Service? Yes. Are you familiar with? I know we're putting you, throwing you under the bus right now, but. We had a situation, it's probably been ten years ago, twelve years ago, we had a, we had a septic, uh, system that failed, and, uh, it was running raw sewage into a little stream that ran into a creek that ran into Tegger River. And we had to file suit on behalf of the Health Department. We filed suit on behalf of the Health Department, the EPA came in, and there was all kinds of problems. I mean, those people, I mean, they got cleaned up, but there was a cost, a tremendous cost, so. Anything, anything you can do to help, help the situation out there, cause I tell you what, you don't want the EPA involved. Well, I don't think that, I don't think.
We're not anywhere near that point, you know, right now, actually, they just inspected the plant, correct. Our plant is operational and, and, you know, there, there are a few things that are not quite right, not enough oxygen into the, we have a polishing pond, there's not enough auction, oxygen in the water at this point. So they're getting chemicals to treat that pro, you know, to, to take care of that pro, uh, process, but the plant is functional, they're, you know, it's old, that's, we're all like, okay, we're either gonna have to get a new plant eventually, or.
Are they gonna run sewer lines to you, or what were they gonna do exactly?
We, they would actually hook, we would hook up, we would have a pump put in with, with a force main going up to their, uh, existing system.
Is that close to you, is that close to Hickory?
About a quarter mile from us.
And who's paying for that?
We are gonna have to do the funding ourselves somehow.
Okay, so, basically, you're not asking for any funding to hook up from the commission, you're just asking for their approval?
Right now, I'm asking for the approval, you know, I might need help.
I think, I think what he's asking for our approval, for them to hook up, and the potential for us to use some of our art, art money.
I'm not art money, I think just infrastructure money.
Infrastructure money to assist them.
Right.
I was wondering, did you have to have a PSD permission to do?
Well, the only reason I'm making a comment here, cause Southwest from PSD went through this several years ago, because when they expanded their system, they actually had to get, and they went into Barber County, they actually had to go and approach the County Commission for Barber County to allow them to go into the county. I think that's what you're asking for, is you're taking your service over into Marion County, so they're asking you to release them from whatever the rate, I don't know what the rate.
I'm assuming, you know, South Point had done that, or maybe not, I don't know, but they are, they have been hooked up to them.
So Marion, or the Whitehall PSD at some point, probably would have come, I would have guessed, would have come to Taylor County and wanted to make sure it was allowable for them to come into here, or into Taylor County to provide the service. So I don't know how much more approval that they need, since, now, let me ask you this, is South Point all entirely in Taylor County?
Part of South Point's in Marion County, a small portion is in Marion County, and the larger portions in Taylor.
Okay, I just know on the Southwest from PSD, when they entered into Barber County, they actually had to get approval from the Barber County Commission. I just don't know if that happened with Whitehall.
I got enough.
So that might be why.
Where their plant is, is definitely in Taylor County.
So I just wanna say, if they, they've done it, they, it might be a moot point, I don't know, but if they're telling you that you do need that permission, that's what I think that.
That is what they told me.
Can you give me the right one, letter of permission, could your office do that for us? Yes, give me the information. If you would meet with Mr. Board.
Okay.
He's a prosecuting attorney, and he's also our attorney, I'm sorry to say. No, go ahead, go ahead, you're, you're doing great. If you could meet with Mr. Board and have him get all the information, and he can draft a letter, then submit it to us, I, I don't really, myself, I don't perceive any problem, I mean, I'm willing to help you all out. I, I think it's a good project to serve that many residents.
Yeah, they've, they were actually, you know, in Whitehall, I spoke to them, they said, might look to get just sapper, um, up on the hill, silver mace, they would be interested in joining, but I.
No, no, no. That's where I live.
That's where you live at, I'm assuming so.
The one I had AOL, sometimes it gets weak.
But I don't know what systems you all have.
Well, I'll tell you one, let me give you my card, and if they have any problems or questions about silver mace. It's not only.
Alright, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So if a project like that is funded for HOA with that many people, what about all the other HOAs in the county that have that many people who have infrastructure problems?
If they had, if they have, go ahead, if they have access to a public service that provides that service. It would be the same as if water came there.
Right, right, and I'm not saying specifically the same thing, I'm just saying, I feel like funding is gonna open this up for a lot more HOAs that are large to ask for help.
And if the HOA is willing to provide some funding in assistance with the County Commission, and we have the funding to do so with this HOA and other HOAs to get a public service, I, I think that it's only a good project, um, in my eyes, so. There, there would be really no difference in providing a utility to any other home rather than, you know, the HOA.
And I think also if the, um, Whitehall PSD is willing to, to take on some of the debt as well, whatever the cost would be, because it, it, they're bringing into their system, so it's a benefit to them.
They more or less told me they were not gonna take any.
So they're not gonna take any of that?
They, they said they're not gonna pass that on to their customers, you know, that we have to.
It's a hundred, the line would a hundred percent be in Taylor County from what I understand you're saying, so it would be Taylor County's responsibility to lay the line in that form, if they're willing to take on the maintenance and
Right.
service of it after that, and it's out of our hands, because there's really nowhere else to, to go with it. I think maybe to answer Ray's, Ray's question, we had one agent, and I think I just mentioned this earlier, who wanted us to come in and just redo their system, we can't do that.
Right.
But we can assist them in connecting to the city of Grafton's system. And then there was another HOA, if I'm not mistaken, that had no availability at all for the city sewage. There was no place out there to build PSD that provides that service, but we can't go in and, we can't build a, a sewage treatment plant for them, but we can assist them in hooking on to an established provider.
Um, so I have a, going back to the first one you were talking about, um, cause I was here when the gentleman came in, um, cause their plant is failing, and who, DP, whoever is gonna come in and they're gonna shut it down eventually. Or, you know, they don't have enough funding for it, cause not everybody's paying their dues. Um, but what happened with that, was the city not?
The city, I don't think the city was.
Willing to take that on?
Take that on.
So then what happens, cause like John said, um, when it does start failing, and what if it does draw sewage starts?
Well, that was the point, um.
That point in time, I think the city would be forced to take.
Well, I think.
Right, that's exactly what happened in the town over in Marion County. This town unfortunately had two homeowners associations, both of them were failing, didn't get money. They basically walked away, said, we wash our hands of it, the PSD sat there and told the town they're taking them, but they didn't take them over at the same time, but the town ended up taking them over and putting them into their project, and they're the one.
I think the one that, and questioned about the city, weren't they going to look into it and the next meeting that we were having?
Yeah, it's just been determined that is probably not very feasible, no, no final decision's been made on the city's part, but I think it was like eight hundred thousand dollar project.
It was almost nine hundred, it was like.
Yeah, it was pretty sizable, and I think that the recommendation had also been made that those property owners may have to look at aerator systems.
Right.
And that, they're running expense, you know.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Well, cause I think they were gonna have to run it uphill.
Yeah, yeah, it's a complicated and expensive area.
Residents, if I'm thinking correct.
Yeah, there's not many of them.
So, in the process, if the city would run the line, they would be able to pick up some additional.
Yeah, I don't, but I don't think at this point the city's really looking at that.
I, I reached out to him at our joint meeting, um, you know, everyone wanted, you wanted me to reach out to them, I said, hey, you know, we can go out there and meet sometime and look at everything, I haven't heard anything back yet, um, it was bad.
See, because then some of them came back and said that they could put aeration systems in there.
Um, see, that would be a health department issue, I don't know why they couldn't, I don't know how much about it, um, so.
I mean, the way I look at it is bang for your buck, I mean, if you can serve forty-plus houses in Taylor County for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars less, and if this one homeowners association's willing to kick in some funds as well to assist the county in the project, I think it's something definitely worth looking at. But like John said, the first step would be to allow Whitehall permission to consider taking, taking on their, their sewage.
Basically, what he told me is, we have to get permission, and, you know, even the way we do, all of the steps get the sewage lineup there and everything, that they have to take us no matter what, is what he told me, that's their present, I didn't, you know, I just, but they did approve, they gave me a verbal approval that they would take us on.
I think the first step would be for us to give you permission to proceed, and I will so make that motion.
Well, I'll second it, we're gonna give it to John.
Okay.
Or Mr. Board there should draft that letter, I'll second that. Meeting of John Ward.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Senator Silver, one of us.
And we'll, we'll probably see you again.
Probably. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, John, we'll, we'll need you back.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Renee, we'll get to you in one second, I think we skipped Kevin.
You're fine, you're good.
I have nothing else to do today.
Alright, Prune Town, we've reached a milestone, we have all these minutes, everyone is signed, hundred percent. That now puts us in a position to request authorization of bid and intent to bid with the funding agencies. Um, working with Region Six and Sheena, um, to get all of these documents, they would need all these specific documents, um, in our contract, so we're hopefully get that out this week, I need to get that to them. They'll review it, their checklist, and then they'll send it to CDBG, um, and then we can, you know, as she said, they've had some, some people not work there anymore, and they're, they're slow over there, so that's kinda gonna be our holdup moving forward. We're moving everything out of our hands into, into attorney's hands and the funding agency's hands, but um, our next step is to request authorization to bid. What timeframe are you thinking, late June, early July?
I, I'd say, let's, a little bit be a little bit more, let's say late July, first part of August, hopefully.
Late July, first part of August, we can get permission to bid.
Cause you did get a PSD waiver, correct?
Yes, yes, that, that's, that's in motion.
Yeah, so I just let, let them know that, um, don't have to go through the normal six months, it takes usually to get through the Public Service Commission.
Yeah, so, the attorney, he's, we're gonna get a waiver here in the coming, coming weeks, he estimates. He's got a, we gotta, he has to get some documents on behalf of you guys, uh, to request this intent to bid or permission to bid. Preliminary title opinion and a couple other documents, but we'll work to get him everything he needs. And, um, we are one step closer, it's a small step, but we're getting there.
Yeah, so hopefully within a couple of months, we can have it ready to go.
Yeah.
The way the commission needs to give him the approval that he's looking, that he's needing, or is that?
No, I think it's just more, you were just providing more of an update, what, what we're doing is on behalf of the commission, getting the paperwork in line, getting it to the state to make sure. What we're doing is on behalf of the commission, getting the paperwork in line, getting it to the state to make sure, you know, all the requirements are followed and that type of thing.
Yeah.
He automatically has the permission.
As part of the project, yes.
Yeah, the permission we're looking for is from CDBG. They funded nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to the Prun Town project. So they're going to review all the documents that we have and give us feedback or say, hey, everything's in order, you have permission. So then we'll get permission from the other agency, the WDA, I think they gave two, three? They gave a couple hundred thousand dollars to the project, just to make, we've came this far, wanted to go back to them and make sure we have enough money to award the contract.
That was what we accepted immediately before the last.
Yes, that was, that was what he is, so.
We've already accepted that.
Yeah, we're one step closer.
Three hundred eighty, thousand seven fifty.
All green, so wanted to do that just to be absolutely sure that we have enough money to award this contract. Once we bid, we'll award contractor, once he gets the award, start to order the material. A lot of them have been claiming lead time issues, so we'll hold them to that. We'll need to see letters from suppliers saying it takes this many weeks to get manholes, this many weeks to get this pipe. So we're not just going to accept, because a lot of them have been using that to delay some stuff to give them more cushion. But we'll make them get letters from suppliers to document this if there is lead time, so.
So once it gets bid out and gets a bid opening, you know, obviously we'll have a public bid opening just likely here.
Yep.
And then, but once we get through all the requirements to get them on board, the lowest qualified bidder on board, then it'll be a pre-construction, which I would suggest, highly suggest that somebody from the county commission be a part of. And also I think Grafton will be a part of that as well since they're taking over the system.
Yep.
And whenever that occurs, there are still, so there's still optional obligations that you'll have to have. Then obviously the county commission will have to sign the contract documents.
Yeah.
This portion that's going out to bid, is it just the CDBG component of this project?
Both.
Say it's both meaning the Prun Town pipe, but not the fairgrounds?
No, not the fairgrounds.
Okay, just want to make sure, okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's still, that's still.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Yeah, that's just the north and south slider for fifty.
Yeah, yeah. So we're one step closer.
Okay.
Closer to that. That's why I made an update.
Now, just a question, which may not be what answers because of the lead times. How, if everything was able to be gotten readily available, how long do you think the contract would take to finish, do the project?
Project, I believe, has a, it's pretty simple, I think it's a hundred and twenty days to substantial completion. And then a hundred and fifty days for final payment. What you guys just signed off for another project, that's just saying, alright, the contract, you've cleaned up everything, the entire system works as it was designed, the plans, the original scope, everything's in. You know, sometimes something happens in a project, it's not necessarily contractors fault. You know, they want paid, saying, hey, we did everything that was bid out and advertised, and that's their final payment. There's ever circumstance where you're not happy or the owner does not like how they restored, they did restoration or the manholes aren't how it was, there is a, you guys aren't able to hold final payment. Say that, we're not going to give you the rest of your money until this is how it was designed.
Finish the job.
So.
So that was when I tell like a walkthrough, so since the council, the commission is the sponsor, I would recommend somebody from the commission go on and find a walkthrough and just create and all that.
Yeah, walk the whole project.
See, it will certify.
I'm close every day.
But that's our, that's our little update.
That's very good.
You guys have any questions, I'm sure you guys can contact me, Patricia's down there, email a hundred percent. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Okay. Taylor County seniors.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm sure you all know who I am. I'm Renee Taylor with the executive director of the Taylor County Senior Citizens. I'm here today to discuss with you our Meals on Wheels program. As you know, we serve a very, very valuable need in our community. We do have food banks available, there are, the mission does serve meals. However, we serve that population that is homebound and cannot get out for those types of services. Three years ago, when COVID started, the governor approached the Bureau of Senior Services, spoke with the commissioner, who then in turn spoke with all of the directors, saying with COVID and our seniors being forced to be in their homes and unable to get out, that we were to over-serve. We have a projected budget every year of how many meals that we anticipate will serve, but every year since COVID started, it has been over-serve, 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 we'll get you the funding. And we have. Two years ago, we took our program from having a twenty mile radius to covering the entire county. We go all the way out one nineteen to Zen Road, I go all the way out two fifty to South Point. We do Boothville, we do Flemington, Rosemont, Simpson, Aster, all the way out there to the county line and clear down to E B Road. So we cover as much of the county as we possibly can. I went from having one driver to four. My drivers go approximately seventy-five miles per day, per route. We have two routes, it's a hundred and fifty miles a day that we go in the county and deliver these meals. In March, Commissioner Roswell, who was our commissioner at that point, came to us and said, there's a five million dollar shortage in funding for meals. But he had spoken to the governor and the governor said, no, 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 keep over-serving, we're going to make sure that no senior goes hungry. Commissioner Roswell retired at the end of March. We have a new commissioner who is now telling us, COVID's over, money's gone, so you have no extra funding. So now you have to make your cutbacks. So that puts us in a position of trying to secure additional funding to meet our budget or to stop serving meals for the months of August and September. Currently.
And then?
Yes, absolutely.
You said August, September, what about November, December?
Well, our fiscal year starts over in October.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So new budgets come out in October.
Okay.
We have been instructed, we have enough funding to get us through the end of July. So August and September are crucial months. We projected this year that we would serve one, or nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five meals from October first to September thirtieth. From October first to April thirtieth, we've already served nineteen thousand three hundred and thirty-four. So we're already way over our projected budget. So what's happening is, if we don't find the funding to get these meals out to the public, there's approximately two hundred and sixty seniors in Taylor County that will not have meals delivered for two months. That does not include the seniors that come into the center and get meals, whether it's grab and go or they actually eat a congregate. Flemington, we have a site out there that would eliminate service to that area completely, which would affect the seniors in the Flemington area as well. We have moved some budget money around to try to compensate for this loss. However, we are still approximately thirty-nine thousand dollars short. We're robbing Peter to pay Paul. But we're getting, and we are applying for, I did apply for a grant through Meals on Wheels, it's called an unmet needs grant. It's five thousand dollars. There's no guarantee that we'll get it, but that will help. We do have some money that comes in from the levy that we use to supplement this program and we'll continue to do that. But right now, what we're looking at is there'll be approximately forty-one hundred home-delivered meals that we will not be able to deliver. So I'm coming to you today in the event that we cannot find this additional funding through other sources to see if there's any possibility that that's something you could potentially help us with.
Renee, when you talk about the Meals on Wheels, I know you and I have discussed that.
Yes.
For instance, the, a person who gets meal on Wheels, they come every day?
It comes five days a week.
And they serve them three meals a day, or is it?
Just one meal a day.
One meal a day?
Yes.
And you serve nineteen thousand meals in those two months?
We've served nineteen thousand meals in the last seven months. We anticipated doing that in a year, we've already done that in the seventh month period.
And how many meals are you anticipating just in those two months?
About forty-one hundred.
Wow, wow, well, we can't let these people go hungry.
Is this just going to get you by for this?
This will get us by until the fiscal year starts over again in October. And then we'll look at reallocations and, again, we were promised this money, we were told over-serve, it was served. We have not turned anyone away. They're now expecting us to start a waitlist, which I really don't want to do. How do I tell somebody, yeah, you qualify for meals, but you're going to have to wait till somebody dies in order to get a meal? And I just don't want to do that. Anyone that is age sixty or above that is homebound is eligible. There is no fee for them, so it's strictly a recommended donation, but we do not bill. If they choose to donate, that's wonderful. If they choose not to donate, it doesn't matter, we're still going to feed them.
Wonder if we can sue the governor for not?
Wouldn't that be wonderful? I do have a meeting scheduled with Amy Summers, Jay Taylor, and Randy Smith to discuss this because a lot of the legislators are not aware that this funding has just, the five million dollars they promised us in March has just miraculously disappeared.
Yeah, just a benefit, but, you know, we have all this over bonus of money and they're cutting all these taxes and all this nonsense and then they cut programs like that.
I don't really know.
That makes sense to me, I mean, I'm a, I'm a physician and health teacher.
They're going to take their vehicle, that's going to happen one year and then they're going to take their vehicle taxes.
Renee, I, I don't know, I know Tony probably can't vote or anything because he's on your board out there. But I would make a motion that we provide the funding, what did you say?
We're going to be about thirty-nine thousand short.
I would say thirty-nine thousand pending, if you would get other, not to exceed thirty-nine thousand dollars. We'll put it that way. I'll make the motion not to exceed thirty-nine thousand dollars for services for two hundred and some seniors.
It's about two hundred and sixty.
I mean, we can't, we can't eliminate that program, why are you going to do?
Exactly, and I will second that motion, I think it's definitely worthy cause.
How do I understand?
Just because we'd get it, now please go out and try and get some more funding.
Oh, absolutely, we are looking at other funding sources.
I will.
But I just need a backup in place, I don't want to have to wait until the end of July to make the decision to close that program. In addition to not serving those clients, that means I lay off ten people. So.
Right. And two hundred people go hungry, so.
Yeah, I, I agree on what the judge had.
Hey, well, rather than take that out of general fund, saying, why don't we take that out of code sevens?
We can't.
And we, people can't complain that we just take that out of code sevens rather than general fund.
That sounds fine.
Thank you very much. Renee, I didn't ask this yesterday, but since COVID, have you noticed an increase in meals? We have. Our meal program has tripled, especially for the homebound.
Yeah.
Because they can't get out. And even though COVID has miraculously resolved itself, they're still at home. And they're still not able to get out, if they couldn't get out before, they're not able to get out now. Our congregate service has tripled. Even in Flemington, which it started at four or five people, it's now up to ten that come three days a week to get a meal. In a congregate setting for that socialization, and of course, that'll affect all that as well.
Renee, I'd like to applaud you and your group out there.
Thank you.
On a personal note, I've had opportunity to talk to you a few times about providing for seniors and you've been Johnny on the spot, you've been there and you've taken care of them and they've gotten the opportunity, whether they utilize it or not, they've gotten to have the opportunity. And plus, you also provide other services as well, don't you?
We do, we go into the homes, I have twenty-two girls right now that go into people's homes and provide basic activities of daily living, they help with bathing, dressing, grooming, like housekeeping, some meal prep. They take them to doctor's appointments if they have no other family that's available to do that. We are providing activities to get our seniors out and active at the center. We've started some evening trips, we've started some movie trips, and we have actually formed a senior Olympic team, which I'm really excited about. It's the first time Taylor County has ever participated in the senior Olympics. I have eight that we're taking down to Kaiser next month to participate in those games, just to keep our seniors active.
Is there a fee for that, like housekeeping and such?
There is cost share, there's a federal cost share and it's based on the federal policy guidelines. Overall, most of our clients that receive those types of services, if they don't have a hardship waiver, they're paying seventy-five cents to a dollar an hour for those services.
It doesn't sound like much, but if only they have social security coming in, that's.
It is, it's amazing what people live on.
I applaud you for what you do out there.
Thank you, thank you.
Krista and I are on that board and we see what Renee does and it's terrific.
Yes, it is, she stepped in as director and had a lot of blows there.
I inherited a twenty-year-old building. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Alright, we'll move down to our amendment or rescind existing Taylor County telecommunications tower construction ordinance.
We recently had a request for a new tower construction, which got really popular with John about our current ordinance, which talking with John and his legal opinion is that we currently have an ordinance that just really isn't enforceable. And John certainly, you know, jump in when you want to, need to. So it's basically his and I recommendation to rescind the ordinance. I've talked to some other counties that are surrounding to see how they do it, and they basically, um, they issued building permits, which we don't do in the county. So this would not impact anything into them, because that would still be handled by the city, but we're looking at outlined areas and John certainly will be ready to offer your input.
Back when this ordinance, the commission got some, and it's been a while.
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six, yeah. And the commission was getting some pressure from some people and they asked us to do an ordinance. Now, at the time we did it, we qualified it by saying, look, there's nothing, nothing in the code says you can do this. We knew there were some other places that had done this. They copied that ordinance from Berkeley County or Martinsburg, someplace like that. And they put it, they passed it. And the issue was, you know, can you enforce it? Probably not, because there's nothing in the code that gives the commission the right to do it. Now, I do, Patricia did show me some, some other counties that had.
Lewis County said that basically, the only thing they required is that it has lights if it's two hundred feet taller, which is an FAA regulation. And then Barber County said, the only thing that they do is they have their building department down to just give issue of permits. So the other counties are, which I actually got no response from. So I'm not finding where any other county, county surrounding county has such ordinance. And my problem with it is if we can't enforce this, then why do we need it?
I completely agree. Is there a sense of adding something that you can enforce?
You can't enforce it. I mean, laws on the book, then I can't enforce it.
So if it's opted to rescind it, do I just need to do legal, what do we do to that? Or is an agenda notice enough or do I need to publicize it? I'm asking, because I don't know.
I would assume a legal notice to rescind it.
If you all opt to do that from the table board and rescinding that.
So we need to publicize that we're going to rescind the ordinance?
Ordinance number, you just put ordinance number, whatever it is.
It doesn't have a number? It just has a title.
Our county has a trailer, you're one.
Title.
And we can't charge them anything for this, the owner of the tower is the one that the different people that use the tower pay to, I guess.
The only thing we've done, and it just really caused me to take a look at it because we haven't had any towers since I've been here, we have modification. We have modifications and we come before you and you all disagree as long as there's no concern. But this would just deal with even that component of it.
Well, the owner had a planning commission or something.
I think, I mean, before I came or.
No, no, but I mean, Nover County had a planning or a building.
That was, that was.
Barber County, they did it under the planning commission. The planning commission in Barber County issued, but you don't have a planning commission.
So we have to have a public hearing and two readings to rescind this?
I assume, yeah.
I move, we can move forward with rescinding of this ordinance and follow the procedures prescribed by law.
And I'll second that.
Mission made. Seconding to start the procedure to rescind the tower ordinance.
Krista, these, uh, tower owners get taxed out there. And it's not the individuals that's using the tower. It's the owner of.
The individuals are taxing their land still.
Say that again.
The individuals whose land it is on is taxed still for the.
No, I mean, I mean, the tower itself is usually owned by one company. You tax them, right?
It's usually public utilities or some, you know, under that.
But each of the people that use the tower don't get charged, like AT&T or Comcast?
I mean, AT&T is on my public utility list. So yes, they are.
But like say Comcast wants to use the tower, you don't tax Comcast.
Well, the state does. And then, like I said, it's through that public utility.
Oh, I see. Yeah, come back to that.
Yes.
We just tax the landowner and the state taxes the court.
Well, I think we take like a quarter of an acre, like a cell tower, for instance, you take a quarter of an acre. And it's, because if it's on, like the land and your house is on there too, they're getting that class two, but we take that quarter of an acre and tax it as a class three if it's outside, so you know, yeah.
If it's okay with the commission, we're gonna skip down to public concerns since John is here. We have a public concern about an alley closure in Parkview. Come on forward with this, Connie.
I have a letter. Do you want to read it or do you want me to?
If you would like to read it, you can. If you want our designated reader to.
Okay, this is about a matter of property in our, in our property. I'm asking the commission to look into this matter. And then it's from the Taylor County Commission meeting on June twentieth nineteen eighty-nine. You remember that, right? Okay, a hearing was conducted on closing an abandoned alley in Parkview. Documents were presented to verify that that proper legal notice was published and property owners were served notice. Clyde Poling appeared at the meeting expressing an objection to closing said alley as he would not be able to utilize the back entrance of his property. He had no objection to closing the alley beyond this property line. And further, Thomas R. Spataford made a motion seconded by John M. Withers to approve closing of alley in Parkview from lots fourteen through twenty-two. Lots twelve and thirteen will remain open and property owners currently affected are Clyde Poling and the Blueville Bank of Grafton. This alley is located between Carr China Street and Fremont Street. Motion carried unanimously. However, Clyde Poling, lot thirteen, did extend his property five feet into said alley. My question is the legality of Mr. Poling objecting to the ten-foot alley closure and still taking five feet. I am therefore requesting the commission to close the entire alley with the remaining portion to be included in my property. This would be lot twelve with a garage on the alley and lot thirteen with a fence without a gate to exit the property. Thank you for your help with this situation.
And you have a map there?
I don't have a map.
John, do you recall this back in nineteen eighty-eight? I'm sure you do.
Sure. So they, like a steel trap, right? Did they close, so they closed everything, but what was in front of Poling?
Clyde Poling. Well, he didn't want it closed. My sister, Tina, that's my sister. She, she was more familiar with it because the church runs into that as well and she.
Lots twelve and thirteen was the Blueville Bank at that time and thirteen was Mr. Poling. Fourteen eventually was closed and it was with the church. So what, her, her property is a hundred and twenty feet one way and each of the three are forty feet, which makes one twenty. She already has the five feet where the church closed, lot fourteen. Mr. Poling said he didn't care for it to be closed between, or clear fourteen through twenty-two. So thirteen and twelve remained open. Should have remained open ten feet, but they took their five. Lot twelve, lot thirteen both took their five.
You want to come look at the half here out? There's supposed to be ten-foot alleyway left from the church to Carr China Street, but there's not. Here's Carr China Street. This alley right here, it has been closed to this church here. Over to Lake Jones. Okay, here is where the, right. So the only thing that's open is this section from here, Carr China Street to right here. This is where Connie lives. She.
Is this still, is this still been closed by the?
Has been closed. This, this right here has been closed by, she just, from here to here, from here to here has not been closed. Because Mr. Poling had an objection to closing it due to access to the back of property. Since then, Mr. Poling is deceased. I believe two different landowners in these two parcels and she still owns that.
She would have to legally go through the president.
What they're requesting is.
You can't do it, by the way. You have to do it per code if you're gonna close that section.
I think that's what they're asking.
What should address to your property?
Have that permission from all three. Be a publication. Is this this section between here and here?
Well, that's not an issue. You have to close. You have to close. They're gonna have to go through the procedure to close this alley. Enter a publication, you're gonna do.
We have to get the signed certified letters from the.
Yes, they have to certify. You certify notice and they also have full publication.
Yes.
So Randy Beck, Randy Byrd and Linda Austin and Connie, all three parties have to. And what, the reason.
Because I could remember.
Because she's standing here. I'm looking at Tina. He built a fence.
Yeah, I talked to you guys. Yeah, I talked to you.
The only way you can close it though is you have to do it in the way you.
Yeah, because that's him taking that five feet. But you're still just back here.
It's just.
It's in between.
Yeah, but these were the ones.
Yeah, this one and this one.
That's the whole, I'm sorry, isn't that the whole problem with that old area up through there?
The problem is.
Nobody knows who them are.
Well, and then here's the problem. When they did say Parkview. They petitioned Parkview off into streets and alleys and everything else, thinking it was gonna grow like crazy like Carr China. It never happened because the Carr China plant closed. But at one time, there, there were probably alleys up there that were out there that no longer exist. I mean, we, we've done a bunch of, the commission has done a bunch of closings above
the other side of the road. I mean, we've closed a bunch of alleys on the other side.
We just closed this one right here last year, two years ago, three years ago.
With the Kevin Wade, right?
Right, exactly. Yeah, yeah. But that was, and that's been, the, the whole issue is that they've got, you know, the map. The map that the Department of Highways has, has all these streets and alleys that don't even exist. Probably, some of them probably never existed. So, but the only way that you can close it is to go pursuant to custody. And you, you know, and you're right, Tony. You've, you've been here and closed a lot of them. I think there has to be a publication of paper and a state notice to the parties and everybody, and you have to have a hearing. Remember, we had a hearing with.
A public hearing.
Yes, this is what the church had. They're, they start on fourteen. I'm looking upside down right here. So you can see that five.
It's, it's from here.
Here.
Yeah, that's easy.
And it was closed the resident way, fourteen clear up to twenty-two, which doesn't show on here. But her property has this five. So the question is, how can they take five on commission property?
Well, it's not commission. It's state property.
Yeah. No, it says on here the state.
The commission, the commission only has a right to close.
It's state.
Commission has no liability.
It's not sitting here. The church.
It's not state property.
Yeah. Which it said it is. No.
It's made.
You have a right to close it.
Hey, John.
Well, actually, it's a county, a county.
But who owns that property?
The county.
Technically, the only, county technically, if you want to say technically owns any alley or street that's not, the state doesn't have a dog in the fight. They can close those. But you can't force somebody off of them until they're closed. I mean, you have to, they have to be closed by the county. But we don't.
But you can't, you, you do not have a D.
I have four minutes. It says that the state has no.
State has no fight, the dog in the fight. It's a county.
Correct.
And like I said, Parkview was all chopped up at one time with all kinds of streets.
A lot of dog fights.
Yeah, the streets and that. But you, all you have to do is go through the process of closing.
Is that your request, Connie, to close that alleyway?
And add the five feet on their property.
Otherwise, when they have to move the fence to the garage off of the, off of the ten, I mean, that's a big deal for them.
Well, if, like I said, if all property owners are in agreeance to close the alleyway, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. Because Mr. Poling is deceased, correct?
He is.
Yeah, but tenants that.
Do, do we have, do you, do you possibly have, you know, permission from these two law owners right here? Mr. Randy Byrd and Linda Austin.
I'm sure Austin would agree of the Byrds.
The Byrds, they ran into tenants that are unhinged, to say the least.
You would have to have permission from all three landowners joining that alley to, for us to close the alley.
Okay.
If there's not permission from all of them, then, let me ask you this, John. What's happened here is the gentleman that lives in this.
Thirteen.
Number thirteen has built a fence into the alley and essentially assumed it's his property.
And he's a tenant there.
Well, there was an existing fence. They just replaced it.
Right, if a joining property owner would need access down that alleyway, they would not be able to restrict them access down that alleyway.
It's an open alley.
So you would to.
But it's an open alley.
Essentially enforce them to tear the fence down.
Well, basically, they'd have to get an attorney. The attorney would have to say, look, the commission never gave anybody any commission. Take it, take it out. Take the fence out. That's what happened all the way up through there, that rail, or that railroad.
Yes.
People have, some has reverted to the owner and some has, I don't know where some of it is, but then people take, claimed ownership of it.
That's exactly right.
Well, that's what I told him. I said, just because he put a fence up doesn't mean.
And the thing about it is they can't, you have first possession on the count.
He may say. He asked you this, John. Let's say we close that alley.
Right. So if you could get him, who gets ownership of the?
Property owners get fifty-fifty, five percent, five feet one way, five foot the other way.
And that's what happens on fourteen to twenty-two. It was closed from fourteen to twenty-two and everybody took half.
See, that's not, that, that's not closed. I mean, he can build a fence all he wants to. That's not closed.
Well, that's on thirteen, you know.
And he's a renter, correct me, in John and his property. I would think you would have to get permission from the homeowner and not the renter.
That's Byrd.
You would. You'd have to get permission from the property owner.
Not there for property. Anybody wants to, yeah.
So they.
If you're gonna do the work and get everybody, I'm sure everybody would agree.
It wasn't closed.
Right. For clarification, though, they closed part of that alley, but not all of that alley, correct? So the portion you're talking about never has been closed. He just laid claim, which is why we couldn't find anything to show that he had legal ownership of that five feet, correct?
Because he doesn't.
That's exactly right.
Because Mr. Poling wanted the whole thing left open.
Okay.
Ten feet and then two five.
Well, like I said, he, he didn't take five. He used the five.
He used the five.
And you said they.
He didn't take, he didn't take anything. I mean, I could go build a, a house on your backyard. It doesn't mean I took the property.
Hey, let me ask this question though, because John, you brought up a point which I brought up to you all, was the adverse possession. You said you can't do that against the county, but the county doesn't own that.
That fence could be there for fifty years. You cannot claim.
The county doesn't own that.
Doesn't matter. You cannot.
Because it, because why? I mean, because if the county doesn't.
County agency.
Okay.
Government, government agency. You cannot adverse a government agency.
So who technically owns that? Because you said the state.
Well, it's not the state. It's the county. State will not claim because it's abandoned, but basically to close it, it's no man's land.
Okay, all right.
We have no deed.
No, we have no deed.
We just have control over it.
We have control over the positive.
In terms of, of opening and closing it.
Right.
Because that white. They're friends with them. So they, they.
Well, they're in California.
No, they, I think they do closer.
If you can get them to agree to close that alley, then they will be granted that five feet.
How do we feel about that?
Send a form or something or a letter?
Send a certified. I do not.
He does. He probably has it in files. He probably have where we closed alleys.
And we just get.
People get, get copies of what, what they did. Just follow the copy.
Kevin Wade just did where a couple weeks.
Yeah, you have to, what you have to do is you have to send certified letters. You have to, and you have to schedule a hearing back before this commission. And I think there's a publication that has to be in the paper.
There is. You have to have.
But a publication, I think, he would have everything. Just get one of them.
Jared, I think the last reclosure of that lady property.
Yeah, I think so too.
And it was up in heartbeat, yeah.
Yeah.
Girlfriend.
You just want the five feet. You just want five feet.
He just lay in there.
And that's, and that's.
The less I talk about it, the more.
Right, and I completely understand that, but before we can take action to close the rest of that piece, we have to have written permission from all owners involved.
Well, I think that's what they did in nineteen eighty-nine.
It is. It's the same thing that's in your.
It's in the minutes.
Right. When we went over the proposal, it had all owners involved in that entire alley, that's a Fremont street. And everybody signed off on it except for Mr. Poling. That's why that section left open.
Yeah.
Because there was not permission granted from there to Carr China Street.
Yeah.
So if we can, if you can obtain that.
That involves lot twelve because they voted to close the Byrd's address when they were in California, but I'm pretty sure they're not out there. So that's up to us to get.
To get. Because you're requesting that be closed, then you would have to get all parties involved.
Who do I get a letter from?
It's probably how they did it last, for the last two months.
Ask for her.
Okay, see ya. Hey, thanks, Sean.
Them, preferably, and us would, you, I'd say, I'd say you.
Right, as soon as you have permission from the other two parties, the law owners for twelve and thirteen, thirteen and fourteen, whichever one's.
Twelve and thirteen.
Twelve and thirteen. As soon as you have written permission from them, then we would have you sign off as well. We would advertise it.
Right, would they advertise? What you do, once you get that permission from those three property owners, then get with me. It's a three or two. Okay, three, okay. Then get with me and we'll schedule a date and then, you know, it's your responsibility to publicize it. So you have to go with the man on the statement and publicize that date for the public hearing. So we'll probably schedule it like a month out, so you have plenty of time to do your legal notice. But get with me once you get. But get with me once you get, um, permission from the other two property owners.
Be feasible for her to let them know that if they're not okay with that, possibly they're going to have to move their fence with their garage.
Wow, again, that's a legal issue.
I mean, if they can just take five, then why can't anybody just take five?
Like I said, you're not really taking it, you're using it. But if you would.
Well, see.
Access to that property, then I'm sure some legal matters can be taken, but a survey is going to have to be done to see.
And that's what I told you two that day that you came in on, maybe have to be.
It's going to be a longer process than just closing the road. Close the road would be the most simple solution, because it's only fifty feet. It doesn't look like, I mean, about fifty.
Eighty feet.
Eighty feet, okay.
Long.
Eighty feet wide, and ten foot wide.
Each one is.
So it's only, you know, a small little section, and if all parties are in agreeance, then it would split down the middle, five feet would go to both sides of the road.
Yeah, well, in the long run, it would benefit everyone.
Yeah, but it would have to be surveyed. Even when it's closed, it has to be surveyed.
I'm sorry.
Even if it's closed, it's going to have to be surveyed.
Yes.
To, to get your five feet, because you don't read your boundary.
Well, we, we know from the church's five that she got, we know where one of those boundaries is, so it should be pretty.
Did we survey the last one we did?
They had surveys.
Did we survey the last?
They, they had it surveyed.
They had surveys, yeah.
Yeah, they sure did.
Yeah, but that's kind of understood, you know.
What, we get a survey or you, you do the survey?
No, we all would.
We did.
You did.
Okay.
Even the ten feet? Even if it's owned by the county.
It's not owned by the county.
Yeah, that's right, it doesn't, it's not owned by the county, the county can just go back and close if it's not owned by the county.
It's controlled by the county.
Road closure.
We don't have a piece for it.
It's like a road, yeah.
So what's the, what's the first step now?
Getting the property owners permission.
The last one they did, so I can get you everything that needs to be done, and I'll call you when I have it all together.
And then that goes to the commission?
No.
If you'll, you'll do it later.
After we get them signed?
Okay, I'll check with you.
And then please call me.
No, I'll have to look, I'll have to go full, I'll have to go search through records.
Okay, and then you'll call me?
Yep.
Okay.
God, you need to.
No.
Oh gee, let me frame this. It's a dandy. And they should send their certified, right?
You have to send them certified, those letters.
Yeah, we had the copy of where Mr. Poling had his certified app in nineteen eighty-nine.
We're carrying the receipt.
Because then they, yeah, sign off.
And I think that that information, Jaren, that you probably stated, that it has to be certified, but yes, they do have to be certified now, because.
Well, now we know, have to look. If I'm overs. Been interesting.
Okay.
And get that work thing fixed up in the park, we don't want to be out of work for a week to get it, that's, that's the whole county.
Yeah.
Us, so, yeah, and that, that's.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all for coming.
Just reach out, just, Connie, just reach out to me once you get all that together, we'll give you back the schedule.
Okay, would you like to see a picture of the fence that I get to see every day?
It's the accessory.
I'm actually, I'll give it out.
Some cup of noodles or something over there.
All right, we'll get on down to.
What's the green thing?
Well, I don't have to talk about the fence.
Yeah, I understand.
But the, the thing is, now, that fence, where they put the posts, now, it used to have lattices, but now it's even wider.
They just keep.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the creep effect.
Yeah.
You know, they're creepy and now the fence is creepy.
Is there, are they in the White House, perhaps?
No, it's a two-story, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
You're good.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you all.
See you soon.
Yeah, if we got any new hires for Green.
No, not on mine.
Nobody, nobody coming to work.
Do we have any elected official reports?
The only thing I have, and I don't know if this is where I need to do this for, um, the gentleman that came to BOE and wanted his, um, so I had two calls with the judge at O'Toole, Office of Tax Appeals. The first one, they wanted, extended it thirty days, wanted us to try to work it out. Had our meeting a couple weeks ago in here with, um, the gentleman on Sandridge, um, we could not come to an agreement. So it is going to go on to court. I spoke with John, um, to see if he wanted to, you know, just take this on, but as you know, he's always said he's not real. Familiar with real estate, you know, real estate, so he would prefer not to. So our office cannot represent ourself, you all cannot represent yourself with this new Office of Tax Appeals hearings, so, um, we need to have an attorney. We're going to have to hire a lawyer. So I have been working with one, it's the same gentleman, Mr. Randy Saunders, um, you don't have to use him. I just use him for the preliminary stuff and he drew up a couple drafts and stuff for me, um, and was on all the phone calls with us. And has been in contact with Mr. Fasigna. So that's basically, um, all I have, because, like I said, we cannot represent ourselves.
How do you think this will boil down, Chris?
Well. I don't know, the judge said he is going to have to prove that we're wrong, and he just cannot present, you know, documents and just have them look at it and state that. This is why. He's wanting to go back when he first originally built his house at cost. He'd do that.
The attorney that you've been working with is very familiar with this.
Yes, with real estate, and he is familiar with this, I've also, I have Jerry Knight on retainer too, which you're familiar, he worked with the State Tax Department for several years. So he's been on the calls too, and he and Randy work well together, their offices are right beside each other, so.
Do you feel he would consider taking that?
Yeah, I do.
Well, I mean, since he already has all, all of it, I mean, it would be.
Yeah, but like I said, I wanted to get with John first, I know he's swamped and all that, but, you know, he is our prosecutor, and if he could take it on, that would be wonderful. But I just talked to him.
If we have to hire Mr. Saunders, would the commission assume the cost of that, or?
Probably so.
That's the wrong thing, because it went to BOE and you all denied his request.
Granted, when he had.
I think the cost would come to us to.
He'd have to prove the assessor's office was not correct.
Yes, yes.
And we don't feel that the assessor's office was not correct.
We presented him with our, our comps documentation on this, and did not really want to listen.
Let me ask you this, in this situation here, the county has to hire a lawyer to represent us in this case. If the judge favors us, is Mr. Fasigna responsible for our attorney fees?
And I brought that up with Mr. Saunders, and he's like, that's a good, you know, that's a good question, and he says, I think that we should shoot for that.
I believe, I, I think in any, any case in West Virginia, I think that's been passed here a few years back, where if, if someone sues you, then they don't win, then they assume the cost that you would accrue.
And I was willing to work, you know, work with him, um, but what he was requesting was unreasonable.
If he wants to pursue the issue, I think our attorney should talk to him or his attorney and tell him, you know, this is the guy.
He's representing himself, and Mr. Saunders has talked to him already.
And if, if you lose this case, you're going to be paying his.
We haven't got to yet that point, but, um, because we just got this.
Yeah, because we can't take on any frivolous lawsuit and then pay the citizen.
All right, all right, because even if you win, you lose. If we had to, if we win the case, and we had to pay for a lawyer, a representation, then we still lost.
But in the long run, I mean, you're setting a precedence that if we get into this, then we have to do for everybody else, just like we. And that's not how I operate, what I do for one, I do for everybody else.
When he came in front of us for Board of Equalizations, we were the panel that had to make, to make that decision as judges. And we sided against him, so now he's appealing going to a higher court.
And this is the loss of tax, because it's only for everyone. And that's, the problem is now, this is going to cost the counties a lot of money.
That's what I'm saying, if we win though, it should cost the person appealing.
And we can request that, if that's.
I agree, recommend we request that. Right. And as long as he is a hundred percent aware that he is going to accrue that cost.
And we have not brought, that, that was just something I brought up to Randy last week, um, after we had our second call with the judge. And he never thought of that, so that's something that we can put out there.
He's going to have to pay the attorney whether he wins or loses.
You can request that, it's not going to automatically happen.
He'll have to pay his attorney no matter what.
Yes.
But he's representing himself.
He said he's representing himself.
So. If he loses the case, then he will hopefully accrue the cost of, that the county had to pay to represent the county.
You can ask that, I mean, it's just like any civil case, I, if I sue you, you have to pay your attorney fees, you can request that the part of the rule would be that I have to pay yours, but it's not automatic.
No, they may not, that may happen and that may not happen.
That seems fair.
It does seem fair, but what always isn't fair isn't always the legal one, I think, for that.
I'm requesting a request.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I guess, I, I would favor, you know, your attorney myself, I mean, right, he knows what's going on and he knows all that.
And he's familiar with real estate laws and, um, yeah, all of that, like I said, we had him for Great Lock when we had them that time, so. Okay, but I just wanted to bring it.
And we're not able to have the commission or the assessor be our representative.
No, we can be witnesses, yes, so that may be just, who knows what's going to happen, because, you know, what he has said in the past, but, yeah. But they did, the judge did say, he was requesting all the hearings be held in Charleston, but the judge said, yeah, we want to do it all, zoom. So, yeah. That's all I have, so. So if I do get, um, invoices, just give them to Jaren and just, okay. Okay. I mean, I'll, I'll do this one, because I, what did it mean for him to, I was just asking for advice at one time, so, yeah, he just kind of took it. But I'm kind of glad he was on the calls, so.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Gentlemen?
Yes, we need a motion to approve the attorney.
Do we need to, do you want that attorney to represent, is that, is that what you're requesting?
I would suggest that, he's familiar with it, he's dealt with him a few times.
Randy Saunders?
Yes.
And you're accepting as our attorney against?
He's with Nelson and Mullins, sorry, he's with Nelson and Mullins.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and I'll second that.
Well, we had a motion to exactly to approve Randy Saunders with what?
Nelson and Mullins.
Nelson and Mullins.
Yeah. And you, oh, I guess.
He's a Mullins, I N S?
Yeah, Nelson and Mullins.
Oh, Nelson and Mullins. Not Hunter Mullins.
Okay. Thanks, Chris.
Yep.
Royal Tony, you guys have an elected officials report?
We had met with EMS, and we're here, some, some of that are ready, so we used to rehash that. My nine-one-one meeting this afternoon had been moved to next Tuesday, so. So I have right now.
My, uh, report is, uh, I went to seniors meeting and you all know what the result of that was. However, everything else is going fine, all the other projects that Renee works with. Uh, I do have some, uh, good news, I think, for my, uh, shelter workshop. We're going to start working with, uh, someone from, uh, a group out of Charleston. And we're working with, uh, Lori Schumaker, Crystal Grafton-Hi, but anyway, there's a group there that works with these situations and, and things are looking pretty good now for my shelter workshop. So hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll find out more and I can give you better.
Fantastic.
Better mo, better, uh, news.
Well, in the meantime, we have received a couple thank you, one is a card and the other is a medal. One is from the GHS staff and students for, uh, supporting their after prom. Uh, they had a great turnout for that, it looked like, and they sent us a nice thank you card for that, and, uh, the girls' swish basketball team won a tournament and presented us with one of their medals that they, so. That was nice of them, and, uh, this week I was, I was also thinking about upcoming events, we had the Spirit of Grafton Carnival and concert that's going on Memorial Day weekend. Biggest event of the year really for the county. Got with city council, last time that event took place for the rides, they, you had to pay per ticket to ride rides. And the cost of that ended up being like four dollars to go down the sliding board or, you had to go on the Ferris wheel with an adult, so if you wanted to take your kid on it, it was eight dollars to ride the Ferris wheel. So getting with city council on the potential of making that a little bit more affordable, they went to a wristband type admission for the carnival, which was initially fifteen dollars, and they've been contacting, they've lowered that price to ten dollars per person to ride as many times as possible. The city never requested any assistance with that, but it's going to cost them twelve thousand dollars for that carnival. I was, I was thinking if, if we could help them out with half of the cost of that, I think it'd be a good thing for the county to support. So I, I would, I would like to help out with Spirit of Grafton Celebration if, uh, if we could split the cost with them and help them out with six thousand dollars of it, I, I would, I would be in favor of that, if you all would.
I think, I think that would be good too, because the Spirit of Grafton, you know, it is in Taylor County, which we're in charge of, so I have no problem with that. In fact, I would make a motion to split that and pay the six thousand dollars.
I'm second that motion. Commissions are made to pay six thousand dollars to the city for the Spirit of Grafton Carnival, another opposed, motion passes. And that is all I have for elected officials, but move down to waivers and settlements.
Got one waiver and one settlement. Settlement and waiver.
What's it mean where it says insolvent estate here?
So insolvent estate is when more claims come in on the estate than the money's available in the estate, it can't be paid, then it's considered insolvent. So we have to close it out, there's not enough money within the estate to pay off all the claims that came in.
You have to kind of divide it up by percentages or how?
What they do is they give receipts and disbursements, so all the claims that came in, say there's ten thousand dollars on, on an estate, and they only had five thousand dollars worth of monies, and they exhausted everything, you have to sell real estate, vehicles, assets, and they still only had five thousand. They're five thousand to the negative, so there's nothing to give to anybody else, and there's no way for them to do a final, final settlement, so it becomes insolvent, because there's no money to pay it.
Do they pay the outstanding bills, uh, in some sort of percentage, or just?
The claims, so they, so they get sufficed to a certain point until the money's expended, then after that, that's what the insolvent's for, there's no money to pay those anymore.
And co, accounts the delay to get paid for.
There, there are certain ways, there's certain. There, there are certain ways, there are certain, like for example, General Home gets paid first. So if that absorbs all the money, the rest of them, it's done. There's a, there's a list of order who gets paid first and how it goes.
And, and Jaren, I want you to introduce that pretty little girl sitting beside you and tell us more about her and what she does.
This is Pam Martland. She's one of my new employees and she's, um, doing some training to fill in for me whenever I'm at the state auditor training next month.
Tony, I think you called her to have a riff.
Well, did I ask a question out of, out of order?
No, it was not out of order, I just think you got on the spot.
I mean, it was kind of unusual to see like you're sitting on the other side of you. I just wondered what, what this was all about, you know?
Well, do I hear a motion to approve waivers and settlements?
So move.
Thank you. Second to me, motion passes.
I'm gonna send an expense sheet down along with that to, to Jaren.
Can I sit down? That was in a different place.
Yeah, is that the only one, Jaren?
I think it is. I think the rest is just a show of words and solvent.
Right.
You guys enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Do we have exonerations and consolidations?
I do, I have two exonerations.
Twenty-eight dollars and a hundred sixty-eight dollars, Tony.
I'm going to be accepted exonerations.
I'll second.
Motion's been made, second's been made, none are opposed, motion passes. Do we already have public concerns, Les, Leah, you have anything?
I have nothing.
Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. And do we want to pay the bills?
I make a motion to pay the bill.
I second it. Motion's been made, second has been made to pay the bills, none are opposed. Motion passes, we pay the bills.